Storm seems to have spared us. It's actually calm now.
Yeah, I I was looking outside. It's quite a bit of melting. My yard was filled with snow and now it's down to the grass again and occasionally I take a peek down the basement because we had that big rainstorm a couple of, I think.
October.
I got a little bit of water.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just going to make sure that we are live. All right, we are all set to go.
All right, I guess I will call our meeting to order then trustees, Tiverton Library Trustees Budget Subcommittee Meeting. And our first item is review of the FY twenty-two budget. Is that what you have, Catherine?
Uh, is it twenty-two or twenty-three?
Did we have both of them on? I, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up.
I think we have fiscal year twenty-three full budget and then fiscal year twenty-two capital.
Okay, which would you like to start with, or which did I put on the agenda that I don't remember anymore?
Let me take a look just to double check here. I did not bring it up. I apologize.
Well, because we knew what we were talking about, the money.
All right, so fiscal year twenty-three full budget. And I can take that away if you'd like.
Sure, start us off.
Sounds good. Okay, so not much has changed since this was an approved draft back in November twenty-twenty-one at the full regular board meeting that month. I do have just a few updates that I'll highlight and that I've incorporated into this budget. So the first being in service contracts. So currently we're contracted with GM for our HVAC service. And so they sent us a quote a few weeks ago and our service contract with them would be increasing from four thousand three hundred dollars to five thousand three hundred dollars. So I think this is a good time to put that contract out to bid.
They give an explanation?
They did not. So I plan on letting them know that this will be a contract that we are going to be soliciting other offers from other businesses for. The state MPA list has quite the list of vendors who perform this type of service. So I do think there will be substantial competition. So I will ensure that we get our best price and not only our best price, but the best price for the service that we are getting. I think that's important to note as well. So that, I did put that fifty-three hundred into the service contract line as a placeholder. I'm really hoping that we do not get to that point and that the other companies that we solicit quotes from will not be up to that level, but that remains to be seen. So in the meantime, it is a placeholder in our service contract budget and that has brought the service contract line to eighteen thousand and thirty-five dollars per year. Any questions before I move on?
I have a question. I was looking at the maintenance and service contract. I put them both on one sheet and I noticed under building repairs, EVAC is noted under notes. Is that just because it's a repair as opposed to a service contract?
Yes, that's correct. The service contracts are like our regularly scheduled maintenance, things that we know the cost of. And then maintenance is going to be those pop-up items, those one-time costs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so next on the update to this draft would be salaries. So I did make adjustments to reflect the hiring of our new technology coordinator and also where we stand with on-call staffing. So there was not a significant change to that line. I was just making sure that everything was input correctly and that way we are ready to take a look at that line. That is four hundred and forty thousand, just to make sure I'm looking at the correct one, four hundred and forty thousand and nine hundred dollars. That is a bit lower than previous years. Well, this year in particular due to some staffing challenges that we've had. So that leaves FICA impacted as well. So we are about two and a half percent lower this year on salaries in FICA. The same with health benefits. Our new staff member is taking in lieu of instead of a health insurance option. And retirement is something that we are at the mercy of what MERS and TIAA have there. So the MERS increase was actually pretty substantial for fiscal year twenty-three at four point two one percent. Traditionally, it's been around two or three percent. So we definitely saw a big jump there.
And the salary lines, do you have some amount built in for the teen librarian position?
Absolutely. That position is fully built into that line. As is family health insurance for that position, that is the highest health insurance cost that we could potentially have. So that way there would be no surprises in our salaries or our benefits line if we, if the person that we hire does select that option.
Right. I did have a question and I'm not sure if you've answered this before. I know what MERS is. What is TIAA?
Okay, so there's technically two retirement accounts that our staff members have. This is for staff members who work over nineteen hours per week regularly. So it is our full-timers and also our staff member who works at twenty-five hours per week. So the TIAA is the second type of account that we have and we contribute one percent and they contribute one percent to that. It, I, it is a state of Rhode Island account. I'm not sure of the exact name of it. I would have to log into my personal account to see. But it is a, it's like a 401K from what I understand.
And is it a required contribution on the part of the employee or is it optional?
I believe it is required. I've never had anybody asked not to contribute. And I believe if they didn't contribute, then we would not have to either. But I can definitely double check on that with Town Hall and see if anybody has ever opted not to take the TIAA.
If it's, i- if it is optional. So the MERS only we contribute to, correct? Not the employee?
Uh, the employee does. The employee does. I don't think it's to the level that we contribute because our level is pretty high and I don't think that's what's being pulled out of my paycheck, to be honest. So.
And these are both for employees working over nineteen hours a week?
Yes, correct.
Okay, those are the only people that can participate.
Yes, and actually now that I think about it, it may be uh, over twenty.
Well, I know Pam Polley at the time had told me it was over nineteen hours. So that's, it said, anyone over nineteen hours on a regular basis uh, has to be contributed to the, well, the, the library has to contribute to the retirement fund as well as the employee.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Is that a, is there something we can see that shows that? I mean, is there a contract or something at the state level we can inquire of?
Yes, so on the MERS website, there is a list of upcoming fiscal years. So I believe they have two or three fiscal years worth of contribution. So we can see a few years ahead. And so there is, when, I can send you the link. I think it's in one of my previous budget documents, but I don't have it right off the top of my head. So I, I can send that along and there's actually three different Tiverton positions in there. I think there's a few other departments and unions who have different percentages. So I'll be sure to point out the one that is for our staff members.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I covered salaries, health benefits and retirement. The next option would be program expenses. So this is the anticipated amount. I'm still working on my final request to the friends, but this is my anticipated amount. They have not had the number of fundraising opportunities that they've had in the past. They've done mini-book sales and also mini-craft sales. So we've adjusted our programming to sort of mirror the income that they are pulling in for our programs so that we're not completely exhausting their resources from year to year. So I think this is a pretty accurate representation of what we'll need for this year for our program. And my next update is going to be on state grant, grant in aid. And we did see a little bit of an increase here. It is about three thousand dollars more than we anticipated. So that is good news for us and this is determined by the governor's budget. So there still is a little ways to go until we are for sure getting that amount. So that's one thing I always like to mention is that this is not set in stone. It could change. In recent years, there has been a push to fully fund the larger amount of money that all the libraries pull from. So I have not worked out the exact percent that this is, but it is not twenty-five percent which we are supposed to be getting. So I'll say that. Okay, and my last and final update is our town appropriation. So I did, this is just a note to you both that I did submit this figure of six hundred and three thousand to the town administrator and he did indicate that it was included in his draft of the budget. So we are currently looking at that amount. Coming to the end of our budget, we will be just about balanced for fiscal year twenty-three. And this also, as you know, includes an increase to our collection line, which I think is much needed and one of our goals that we had talked about in the previous meeting. And everything else remains relatively stable, I would say, from this year.
Okay, did we cover electricity? Was that in one of the items? Because I did have a question on that, year over year.
So we had covered that back in November, but I'm happy to pull up my.
What I noticed is in terms of the year-to-year usage, you showed us months going back. We saw a jump th- this past fall in November and typically we see a decrease in November from the prior month. And so I wondered if we had any idea what was causing that.
Could I mention something?
Ha, yeah.
I noticed the same thing.
Yeah.
But I also looked back at fiscal twenty-one and if you look at fiscal twenty-one, the same thing happened from October to November. There was an increase.
So this, I don't want to say causation equals correlation and everything like that, but daylight savings happens in November. So we typically start seeing those earlier evenings and our lights are on for a bit longer during those days. Now, when we go to November, that did drop. And I think that may be in part due to our numerous closings that we have in December. So that could be one cause of that. I don't know if that is the full cause, but that would be my speculation.
Okay, yeah, and I, and I see you're right, Sandy. So FY twenty-one, it went up. I- it's, you know, FY nineteen, it dropped substantially. As it did FY eighteen. So it, it's and I don't know what happened in FY sixteen. That's a real blip. The usage would drop from October to November.
Well, I think some of the recent stuff is attributable to the control issue you were having. There may have been some blips involved there. I know that was a big issue. So I'm, I'm, that could be, I mean, I'm sure it's related somehow.
Hmm, right, but then it, you know, the electricity usage dropped in December from November. So I, I don't think it's related to the time change, right? Although I, I, did we have a lot of meeting room usage or something? That might have, you know, that could skew our utilities if we have these groups in the meeting rooms more one month than another. Or even programs.
Absolutely. We have had more meetings, absolutely, especially since Zoom ended back in, I think it was September or October now. So we had more meetings and also more building usage, more folks coming through. And I think in general, over the years, just more computers and more machines in the library as well.
Well, one of the things I didn't, I don't look at my electric bill as closely as I used to, but I know in years past I'd look at it and sometimes the utility will bill you for more days in a particular month than another month. So there could be an issue where maybe they're billing for thirty-three days as opposed to thirty days and maybe December was a shorter bill. I don't know. I'm just, there are a lot of variables that, that could be a possibility.
That is actually a very good possibility and I should also include for you now that I think about it. When Karen receives our electricity bill, she actually breaks out the bill by the number of days. So she averages the daily usage. And I don't think it's too far off. I can pull that up right now.
I know when I've signed a few of the electric bills, that's the first thing I check and usually the month to prior year, month, same month, usually are about the same. She does that little average. She kind of handwrites it in.
Yes, let me, and let me actually share my screen with you because when we pulled this up, really, really interesting. If you see over here, I hope you can see that.
Yeah.
You can see substantially per day it is decreasing after November, December, January. We did have that little spike in November still. So October was six hundred and fifty-seven, I believe that's kilo lot per day, six hundred and eighty-nine in November, five sixteen in December and five oh one in January. All right, and I can send this sheet to you if you'd like to have it for backup material as well.
Yeah, it was, the other thing that is sort of similar to the number of days is that, and this is true of my home bill, that they call it December, but it could be November eighth to December tenth. So it, it's, you know, i- it's not really the true calendar month. It's not real, whatever they call it, January or November or December. You know, there's an overlap. The days are actually more than one month and over the years, I'm thinking that may have an effect too.
Yes, and also just one more mention of things that might have changed. December was actually the month where we were able to fix that lighting issue with the lights turning on at night.
Oh, good. That was the drop then.
Yep, and I, I do check our security cameras every so often so that I'm making sure that those are staying off at night and they are. So we're in a good spot there. So that could be a reason for the drop as well. January would be like the first month where we did not have any issues with lights turning on at night because it took a little bit into December for us to tweak that system.
Yeah, and maybe that was the increase in November. Maybe that's when the problem started with the nighttime lights. And I think that's probably our answer right there.
Yeah, I, I think it might be. All right. So that is the overview of our fiscal year twenty-three budget. Would you like me to go into any detail about any other line?
Could I, no, not only any detail. I went through the expenses. They seem pretty reasonable, but one of the things I noticed and I went back and actually inserted it myself on the sheet that I have. I know we show the budget from all the years, but I don't know if it would be helpful to actually put in the actual expenses for the years as opposed to the budget. I, I know the budget is meaningful, but there are line switches throughout the year. Like when I did this year, I, I don't have it, if I can find it. Yeah, I put in fiscal twenty-one actuals and what was nice about it was I was able to show that from them to fiscal twenty-three budget, the increases for two years is less than four percent. So it, it kind of backs, but if you look at the, the lines in terms of where the differences were, it's kind of spread throughout. It's not just one particular line, but basically what happens is you've held the expenses to where they should be in total and we've had to make switches. If you needed more books or whatever the issue was, or if you had some salary savings, use that for maintenance when you had a maintenance issue. I, I'm just, just a suggestion. It, it seems to be a little more helpful to have some actual information in there as opposed to the budgets. Because if I'm on the budget committee, that would be the first thing I would ask you is what's your actual and what's your forecast for fiscal twenty-two? And again, I don't know who would ask that. I would, but again, that, that's from my past experience. So I'm, I'm just, just, just throwing it out there. But other than that, I'm fine with the expenses. They're, they're, they're reasonable. I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, everything looks good to me and, and the backup is, as always, extremely detailed.
No, it, it's fine. It's more of a presentation thing for me in terms of the, how it's presented.
I can definitely make that adjustment. I will have, work with Karen next week on that.
It might, like I said, it might be helpful because again, again, if I were on the budget, but I would ask that question. What's your forecast for fiscal twenty-two?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right. And once this is approved by the full board, on February fourteenth, I'll go ahead and I'll make sure it's included in our usual budget committee and town council budget packet. So everything will be in there. And I'll of course send you both a draft or two before I go ahead and print and send and all that good stuff.
Okay, is it time for us to move on to FY twenty-two capital?
I think it is.
Okay, then let's do so.
All right, so we had a discussion back in November and this was the same list that I presented to you all then. I just wanted to include that in your meeting packet today. Some of the ideas that we had about our fiscal year twenty-two capital. Since we're in February now, I think it would be a good idea if we were to make some concrete decisions at the full board meeting, just so I can get moving on getting any quotes or bids that we need and that way we won't bump up and up against the end of the year. I'm already a little nervous about always having to make sure that we're good to go in June and that there's nothing that's coming up. That's, that's a surprise really. So if you have any suggestions or thoughts, if you're wondering about the status of the outdoor project, I can certainly give an update as it relates to our capital thoughts on that. So let me know what you'd like to hear.
I, I think the suggestions for capital use that you outlined, those concrete stanchions and the seal coating are very good ones. Do we have any ballpark figure for, for those items?
I don't.
Idea whether it's two thousand or ten thousand or more to seal code our parking lot.
I think so. I, I think, I'm thinking the same thing. It could be one or the other. So what I'd actually like to do is I don't think we've had a property subcommittee meeting in quite some time. And I think there are some new members on that subcommittee. So what I may ask is if we could have a meeting. I would really love to have an in-person meeting so that we can do a walkthrough of the building, but I don't actually think that we can do that. So I can go to the property subcommittee, schedule something with them and see if we can get moving on that as well, because I think it might be good to loop them in as well.
Yes, and, and Jay Edwards may give us some sense of with fifteen thousand dollars, how many of these items we could anticipate being able to fund? Because if two of them are, if two are going to take up all the funds, we don't have to come up with three, four and five, right? If we're going to have money left over after doing one and two, then we do want to have some other options that we've discussed and maybe voted on in terms of priorities.
Absolutely.
I think at the last meeting we had, he had some suggestions, did he not? I thought he did. He had mentioned something about what could be utilized for those barriers. So he might be a good resource.
I think so.
You're absolutely right, Carol.
Right, the so if, if the property subcommittee, ideally if they could meet before our February fourteenth meeting, that would be helpful because then we could give you the official vote on the priorities and going out to bid for how many projects and which ones.
Sure. Oh, I'll try and see if I can have everybody in maybe next week or I actually will be in next Saturday for the vaccine clinic that we're hosting. I know we have to do a Zoom meeting though, so I'm wondering if the property subcommittee members could come on their own and do a walk-around with me and then we meet over Zoom. That might be the best option.
Right, and they share their ideas during the Zoom meeting, but they would have the opportunity to individually go around the library. Yeah, that sounds ideal. Because I did hear that the governor has extended the virtual meeting requirement until Feb-, I think it's February fourteenth, isn't it?
It is. Well, our, our full board meeting will be on Zoom because it's extended through the day. But we'll see where we end up after that. All right, so that is all that I have for capital, but please let me know if you have any additional questions or would like any other updates.
The only other thought I had was, I know we had discussed the outdoor furniture, but then we have the possibility of, of grant funding. And so that makes me reluctant, you know, to purchase something that we have the possibility at least of acquiring through the grant funding.
Yes, and we are looking at grant funding for the outdoor area on the northeast corner of the building, which for anybody watching at home still has a very long way to go. We are still in the very beginning stages of working on a grant for this. So but if we did want to think about patio furniture for the west terrace, that's the book architecture literary terrace, that might be a great idea because our tables out there are teak and they are very heavily used. We have kept up with them, but at a certain point with the elements and everything, all the use and abuse that they go through, I think that would be a very nice thing to possibly replace this summer.
Can they be refinished?
They can be, I believe, which I think that would be a nice option if we did not want to purchase added tables. One of my other thoughts too is tables on the front patio and possibly a bike rack out there because as much as we love our bike racks down the stairs, sometimes we have children who would like to keep their bike a bit closer to the building. So if we could even just get a small one right next to the railing up on that patio, that would be ideal and that would really help keep things away from the cedar shingling. That is, the cedar shingles, that is that is my Everest. So I think that would be sort of like a nice deterrent. So uh, I think that would be sort of like a nice um deterrent, uh friendly deterrent, if you will.
Cedar shingles are nice, but they're expensive to replace.
They are, and we've had so much bike and skateboard damage from it, um, that I really don't want to replace them again. So.
Yeah, and it actually, if we put a bike rack where the skateboarders skate up the side of our building, that may prevent them from being able to access that particular spot.
Hmm. Um, there are also other preventative options that we could take. Um, something like skate shoppers, which are little metal pieces um that we could have installed on our railings, which I think that would be my priority. Um, it's really just a circle piece of metal that is um attached to the railings so they cannot slide down them. Um, because if you walk up our steps, you see how much the paint has worn off from um the sliding. And I think that would be a good option. Um, and of course, those things are on my mind as well. If we do a walking path around the library, um, because we do not want uh skateboard and other uh wheeled recreational vehicles heading down that way, other than strollers or wheelchairs, really.
Right. Okay, so perhaps it's been another item for the property subcommittee to consider before our full meeting.
I think so.
All right, so do you think we have covered it all?
Think we have. Uh, from my perspective, I think this is a very conservative budget and also one that is very well thought out and really only places emphasis on the needs of the library, not wants. So I think we're in a very um, very conservative position here.
Yes, and, and as a result, I think it should be well-received by the budget committee and hopefully by the voters.
I hope so.
All right, anything else, Sandy?
I, like I said, I, I was more concerned with presentation of the information to the budget committee. But uh, whatever is, what's listed in there, I went through it. Uh, there's nothing there that's unusual or unreasonable. Uh, it's everyday stuff that you have to do for any business, so it's not unusual.
Okay, well, if there are no other comments or questions, I will John, do we, do we need to vote, Sandy? Shall we adjourn our meeting?
Do we have to? I just out of curiosity, just a quick uh question, do we have to vote on this to say that we want to present it, or is this just an informal meeting, a memo-type thing to just review the budget?
Yeah, the, our subcommittees are advisory. Um, we don't take votes.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to dark why, because this is something that probably will be presented to the budget committee. That's the only reason I'm, I'm asking.
Right, and, and we will have the official vote as the full board.
Okay, thank you.
But not as the subcommittee.
Okay.
All right, then I think that does it for us today. Thank you so much, Catherine, for your great work as always. You, we have so much information and um it's very, very helpful in terms of explaining, defending um the funds that we receive from the town.
I don't think you'd have any problem defending the funds. Uh, the detail is excellent.
Very glad. It's my pleasure, and thank you both.
Okay, see, see you on the fourteenth.
You on the fourteenth. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.